Thirty, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's the special meeting agenda for April nine, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mayor Orsado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos is not here. Councilmember Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer De La Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
He's around here somewhere.
Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section five four nine five two point three, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is seven hundred and ninety dollars monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Okay, we have an open session agenda. Item number one.
The city council will present certificates of appreciation to the participants of the Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Relay.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the certificate. I'll read the one and then I'll say the names and then we'll have them come forward. Okay, certificate of appreciation presented by the Southgate City Council on behalf of the citizens of Southgate. Two, and I'll read the names at the end, in recognition of your outstanding contribution to the Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Relay. Your dedication, teamwork, and commitment exemplify the values of Southgate Police Department and serve as an inspiration to all. Signed by me. So the first one is for, and you can come up and we'll give them to you in a second. Sergeant Roger Consio. Are you guys gonna applaud? There you go. Brian Padilla. Lorena Gutierrez. And I think I know this guy too. Let me see if I can pronounce his name right. Manuel Arana. Give him a big hand. And before we go out there and we hand it to them, let me read the other names. Eric Alvarado, Lieutenant Roman Amador. I think I know this guy too. Chief Darren Arakawa. You guys know that guy? James Chavez. Erin Correa. Jesús Cuevas. Abdiel Delgado. Juan Carlos González. You wanna start holding this? Please, thank you. Pedro Gutierrez. Victoria López. Carlos Medina. Brian Medrano. Sarah Mesa Medrano. Daniel Melendres. Michael Mesa. Abelardo Ocampo. Jesús Osorio. Eric Padilla. Oliver Perez. Sergeant Aloisius Peterson. Jesús Pineda. Gerardo Prado. Anthony Reyes. Abraham Romero. Keith Schwartzman. And Jasmine Vázquez. Let's give them all a big hand. That was so many. They can probably just hold hands and be from Baker to Vegas. I don't know. But anyhow, let's go ahead and hand these to them and then we'll take a quick picture. You know, let me just say that I looked at some of the times out there and they were really impressive. Some of them did really, really well. And how many total miles is that?
Hundred and twenty miles from Baker to Vegas.
Hundred and twenty miles, that's, that's amazing.
They left, I wanted to thank them. They ran.
What happened?
I said, I wanted to thank the officers, but they left.
Well, they got work to do. They're out there making it safe for us. So again, thank you to the officers for an amazing job. That's always a challenge for those who've run five Ks, ten Ks, marathons. It's, it's, it's very difficult sometimes. Okay. Item number two.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that the city attorney is in the chambers.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, the city council will acknowledge staff efforts made to successfully respond to the city water meter challenge over the six, over the last six months.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Predating my arrival in December, there was definitely a challenge at the city with water meter readings somehow going off track with concerns of if the meters were correct, how to solve that, how to address the issue with, how to fix it, how to address the billing issues with the residents. And a lot of pressure, a lot of stress for all involved, trying to get answers, but also trying to respond, trying to make a plan. And I, you know, certainly I came in late in the game, but I think it's been a journey. We've made a lot of progress. We're in a much better place. But over the course of that four to five months, maybe over six months, I know it was a journey for our frontline staff and also our working staff. And so I wanted to just, you know, I think the council wanted to, and I wanted to give an opportunity to just say thank you for the, the intensity and the pressure that everybody was under during that time from the lineups of people at our water department upset and taking that anger out on our frontline staff that are really just trying to do their job, who didn't cause any issue, but really took the heat of everyone's anger day after day after day after day. And that's very draining. And so to keep up the morale, to keep up the ability to still, you know, if possible, smile or at least endure weeks and months of that, that was tough. And then for our water staff out on the meter reading line and in the systems, trying to figure out what's going on, not having easy answers, having a lot of questions on, you know, if people are doing their job properly, trying to make sure they are doing it, finding repairs, solutions, you know, both, it was, it was a tough time for everyone. And I, I just want to say on behalf of myself, thank you for the effort, the fact that we're through that. And it's appreciated that you put it, you know, there, there can be a lot of finger pointing, a lot of people blaming, but I think with the staff, it was really turning the noses into the grindstone and getting solutions and persevering. And I appreciate that teamwork atmosphere. And I just want to pass that on to both Arturo and Wendy, who supervise these divisions, if they wanted to add a comment before we pass it back to the mayor.
Just real quick, I wanted, I know you're gonna acknowledge our staff and the water frontline staff is here, but also in support of the frontline staff, you will see some other people in our accounting division that just also wanted to support the frontline staff. So it just speaks to the organization as a whole, but also our department and how they really do back and support one another as well. So just glad that they had the opportunity to be acknowledged and recognized tonight and I couldn't work with a better team.
Mayor and council members, thank you for taking the time to recognize the team today, particularly on behalf of the Public Works Department and public work staff. You know, public work staff goes out there and does their work daily and they work really hard. It's not very common that we come across issues and we, issues like that arise. We, we come together, we try to figure out how to get information, how to get answers. And sometimes those answers aren't very easy to get and I get that created. It was just a very difficult time, but no, that staff was working really hard through that under the leadership of then city manager, ex-city manager Chris Jeffers. And we did everything that we could to provide you the information that we could. But thank you so much for taking the time to acknowledge staff and thank you guys for everything that you do day in and day out.
Yeah, and again, I, I realize that sometimes things happen that are out of everybody's control. And that was one of those situations. Something had happened, there was errors that were made, there were glitches in the system. And the people probably least responsible for it that are just sitting out there, you know, with people coming to pay are the ones who face the wrath of the people. And, and let's be clear, the people did have a reason to be upset, but they took it on the wrong people. But I think once it was explained to them, a lot of people understood. And I gotta tell you, any one of us who would have been in the position of receiving a bill that six hundred, seven hundred dollars, you normally get one for seventy or eighty dollars, we would have wondered, wow, how did this happen? But it's also on the other end, right? The people who are up there, they're there to do a job and angry people coming in. Again, I think there's a lot of lessons that were learned there and hopefully we can move forward. And I think we're personally, and I think, you know, I'll let them speak if they choose to, but I gotta tell you, I personally feel that our staff is, is very well prepared to deal with just about anything. But when something like that comes up, that's never happened before. There was really not a, any preparation. Nobody goes to training sessions to say, hey, when the water bill is eighty dollars and somebody gets an eight hundred dollar bill, this is how you handle it, it's just not something that happens. So again, I feel horrible for what you had to go through and hopefully us acknowledging the fact that there was an error and had nothing to do with you. We're very, you know, pleased that you're, you're okay, that nothing really, it could have really escalated. Look, as a former supervisor for the post office, I can tell you, I've seen very angry people and people talk about going postal and stuff like that. People get really irate. So I commend all of you for hanging in there. And again, my apologies that you had to go through any of that. But again, thank you for, for hanging in. Madam Vice Mayor, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, I wanted to thank all of you, the department, Wendy Art, for, and the ladies at the counter. I mean, you guys took it all and I just want to thank you for, you know, putting up, I mean, what you guys were called. I think that that situation actually brought us to a point that, you know, we need to give you the, the tools that you need and, because you guys are in the frontline. And sometimes, you know, when we have our council chambers filled with angry people and wanting to know what happened to their bill, you know, you know, we get, we get called. I mean, we were, get told a lot of names and name calling. But you shouldn't be, you know, taking the offensive, the offenses that they have been, they were telling you at that time. So recognition, I mean, we need to recognize our staff every single day, I think. Because it shouldn't, things shouldn't happen before we should recognize people and the work that they do every single day. So I just wanna, you know, from my, from my part is that thank you. And I apologize if one of my comments ever offended you. And that we need training, that we need, I mean, I think everybody is, we need, we need some kind of training. I need training. But I think that, I mean, that helps at least, you know, at least to understand or to control our, not control, but, you know, when we're getting told names. I just want to thank you for what you guys do every single day. Because I'm sure that every single day there is an angry person that comes in or sometimes, you know, that person needs, needs help. But you guys are there. I'm not there every day and, and if I don't see you, and whenever I see you, I want to thank you for the work that you do. And that goes for everyone, every department, but especially those who are in the reception, those who are in the counters. Because you guys do go through a lot. So thank you very much and I do appreciate you a lot. Thank you.
Okay, did you want to say something? You were looking at me, so I try to make sure I don't shut you down.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And I thank everybody here for being here this evening. Yes, the water situation wasn't an experience for all of us. The residents were upset, but everybody went to work, everybody, you know, we, we addressed it. I mean, I remember seeing all these workshops here when I'd come to City Hall, the residents were here and, and I, you know, so in the end, I think it's important that we, we took action right away and, and we hopefully addressed most of the concerns and maybe we'll get a report back and, but, you know, compliments to the staff. I mean, customer service is always, you know, a thing that folks in the front counters should always go to professional development. I mean, they should, because they need time to kinda, it's always frontline people always have to do it, but it takes a certain type of person to do that kind of work. And so it's always important that we, we have opportunities to, to give them the, the training again, the, the time that they need to, to, you know, get, get themselves back because it does wear on people. And again, just thank everybody, but also what's the take? What do we learn from all of this and getting a report kinda out so that we, you know, we, we learn from this experience in terms of what happened and so forth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I like to always take the approach that anytime we get a chance to interact with the residents, an opportunity, right? It's always an opportunity for us to shine because I think that our staff is that. We have people here that have dedicated their lives to our community, dedicated their, you know, their family time to our community. We have staff members that have been part of our family for, we just celebrated over forty years at our last, you know, employee recognition dinner. So I think it's very important to remember that portion, that when we have that opportunity, it's our, it's our chance to really shine as a community, as a staff, as a city. And when we felt short, I love the way we all got together. We figured out what the issue was and then we went to work. We had staff members from our water department here at council meetings late to answer any questions for any resident that had concerns regarding the water bill during the day. They were holding workshops to find funding to be able to pay for past due bills. So I really want to echo that and inform our residents that we have a staff here that when there's something that happens, we get to work and we figure it out. And at the end of the day, nobody wants an error to happen. Nobody wants a mistake to happen. You know, nobody wants that tree to fall, but we're gonna be there to fix it. We're gonna be there to clean it up. We're gonna be there to get it right and we're gonna learn from this. And we're gonna say, we're gonna be better prepared for when this happens again, if it happens again. And hopefully it doesn't. And, and also taught us that there's a lot of our software and our programming that we need to update and we need to start making some investing in the future to update that. So it gave us council members the, you know, the, the warning that, hey, we need to start seeing that happen. And because we need to be able to support our staff with the best programs, the best software available so that way when they're out there doing the job, they're, they're being protected as well. So again, thank you guys all for, you know, dealing with it and, you know, getting to work. Because that's what it really showed me at the end of the day is that no matter what the situation it is that our city is going through, we have the staff capable and willing to work together and get the job done. So again, you know that you have a council here who's always gonna have your back in the good and the bad. We just want to make sure that we always acknowledge when we make a mistake that we did it and let's move on and let's fix it. But great job and thank you for all the work that you did. Thank you.
Okay, so again, I don't know, yes, go ahead. Yes, let's bring them on. They need to be recognized for all the work they did, so. And again, those in the water department, you guys do a fantastic job, everybody. You know, every other day we hear something about water discoloration. You guys aren't doing anything but doing the very best that you can. Our water is safe. Discoloration is a matter of fire hydrants being sheared every other day. How many fire hydrants have we had been sheared this year alone? In twelve months, about thirty to forty, right? I know. And so when I hear that water discoloration, you know, it goes to the same thing. They're poisoning the water and that's, listen, I hate that you guys have to go home, see your families and people are saying these negative things about it and it just shouldn't happen. But I want to thank you for what you guys do. Thanks again. Okay, where are we at now? Next item.
Item number three, the city council will issue proclamation declaring the month of April, two thousand and twenty-four as Fair Housing Month.
Okay, that one is being done by my good friend Al Rios. Council member, take over.
Thank you, Mayor. And, okay, I have the privilege here to read the proclamation declaring Fair Housing Month, April, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas one of the greatest freedoms enjoyed by Americans is the freedom to live in a home of one's choice. Whereas this promise made to us by the nation's fair housing law, which required that all people be treated equally in connection with sale or rental of housing regardless of race, color, national origin, sex, gender, identity, disability, sexual orientation, marital status, age, familial status, or religion. Whereas this year marks the fifty-sixth anniversary of the Federal Housing, Fair Housing Act, the original legislation targeting the elimination of housing discrimination in America. Whereas this, the adoption of this fair housing legislation in April of nineteen sixty-eight, April has been designated Fair Housing Month during which each year the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Fair Housing Foundation organizes events and activities to focus attention on the issue of equal opportunity for housing. And whereas during the month of April and in the celebration of Fair Housing Month, each resident of the city of Southgate is besieged to support efforts to put into practice the principles of freedom, justice, and equality upon which this great nation was founded. Now therefore be proclaimed on this ninth day of April, two thousand and twenty-four, that I Gil Hurtado, the mayor of the city, the mayor of the city of Southgate, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Southgate, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month and encourages all residents to support fair housing laws and focus attention on the issue of equal opportunity for housing. Mayor Gil Hurtado.
So let's go ahead and, and it's her. Say, say it, any, just come on up.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy Guzmán. I am the Fair Housing Specialist with the Fair Housing Foundation. Thank you for this opportunity to show our appreciation of the city for joining us in celebrating Fair Housing Month and acknowledging its importance. We are proud to present the city of Southgate as its fair housing provider and look forward to another year of working together.
Thank you so much. And what we're gonna, yeah, go ahead, applaud. He doesn't come to meetings much, so if he wants to applaud, we're gonna let him applaud.
That's okay, I'll take it.
So I'm sorry. So I'm sorry. Just, I don't know what my wife puts up with me, but she does. In any case, so thank you for what you're doing. What we're going to do, please hang on. We're going to do all the proclamations, and then we'll take a group picture.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is that okay? All right. Item number four, please.
The city council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 2024 as DMV Donate Life Month.
Okay, and this one will be Vice Mayor Maria Dávila.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Declaring DMV Donate, Donate Life Month, April 2024. Whereas organs, eyes, tissue, marrows, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to the need. Whereas during Nation National DMV Donate Life Month, we celebrate the selfless organs donors across our country. We have saved countless lives. Whereas we honor the families and friends of donors who have supported their loved ones, and we recognize the professionals devoted to the transplant community. Whereas there is a great need for organ transplants as there is more than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average of 17 people die each day while waiting. Whereas the need for donate organs especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. Whereas a single individual donation can save up to eight lives. In a donation of tissue can save, heal the lives of more than 75 individuals. Whereas any person can register to be an organ eye, tissue donor, regardless of age, medical conditions, and being registered donor does not impact the quality of life savings medical care or personal receives in an emergency. California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. Whereas individuals can sign up to be organ eye and tissue donors when applying for renew their driver's license or ID and at California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas individuals interested in saving lives through living kidney donations may visit www.levindonatelifeCalifornia.org. Now there be proclaimed on this ninth day of April 2024 that Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, and on behalf of the city council and citizens of Southgate, do hereby proclaim that month of April 2024 as DMV Donate Life Month in the City of Southgate and encourage everyone to check YES online or when applying for a renewing their driver's license or identification card at the DMV. Sign the mayor.
Thank you. I believe she's not here, right? Eva?
Yeah, Eva Perez. No, she's not here.
Yeah. But again, this is a very important thing to do. I think that there's a huge need for it. There's always going to be accidents, there's always going to be illnesses that require some donation. You know, personally, I, something simple. When I was 10 and was involved in a car explosion, my legs didn't grow skin anymore. So I needed someone to donate skin to be used as skin grafts. And let me tell you, I think that, you know, some, people's lives can be saved by these donations. So again, I think they're very important. So again, I thank you for having this on, and thank you for reading the proclamation. Okay, let's go to item number five.
The city council will issue a proclamation declaring the month of April 2024 as the 19th Annual Earth Day Celebration.
And this one will be handled by our newest council member, Joshua Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation declaring the 19th Annual Earth Day Celebration, April 20th, 2024. Whereas the first National Earth Day was observed on April 22nd, 1970 to bring awareness to the environmental health of our planet with activities designed to educate citizens about Earth and its threats to its environment. Whereas the city will observe and celebrate the 19th Annual Earth Day on April 20th, 2024 at Southgate Park by hosting graffiti removal, litter cleanup, tree planting activities, and education, educational workshops. Whereas the city is inviting and encouraging all citizens, businesses, schools, organizations to participate in the Earth Day festivities. And whereas education and awareness of environmental sound practices will create a community that thinks and acts as a responsible trustee of our planet Earth. Now therefore it be proclaimed on the ninth day of April 2024 that I, Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Southgate, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2024 as a 19th Annual Earth Day Celebration and duly advocate for the community to be active in the preservation of our planet, practice good environmental health habits, and encourage everyone to participate in Earth Day activities. Signed, our Mayor Gil Hurtado.
And receiving this will be Senior Engineer Gladys Deras.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, if I can, there's, also want to just point out that we have so many great nonprofit organizations in our region, in our communities, that will be participating in this. So really want to acknowledge them as well and thank them for all their services. There's a few, the Southgate Kiwanis Club, the Bell Kiwanis, and of course, our Seala Kiwanis will be out in full force in our neighboring cities as well. But thank you for the city for continuing to honor this as well.
Gladys?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the proclamation for the 19th Annual Earth Day event at Southgate Park, 8 to 12 a.m., as is noted. This year's event, in addition to what you addressed, we're going to have a few more new event, new activities, which the community, I think, will be happy about. We're also going to have giveaways of oil recycling kits, mulch compost, and for the first year ever, we're going to have onsite paper shredding events as well. So it's a fun, family-filled day activities. You're all cordially welcome to attend along with us and our residents and our community. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a picture. I just want to say that I'm a self-proclaimed tree hugger. I love the environment. My degree is in global studies, which included a big part of it had to do with environmental issues, air, water, and ground. And again, I think it's very important to protect our communities. And again, as we know, the state of California has passed a lot of laws. Some people aren't happy with them because they appear to be a little bit too controlive for some people's taste. But at the end of the day, it's about protecting the one and only Earth that we have. So again, I'm very grateful that a lot of attention has been brought to, you know, protecting Earth. So again, and thank you for being involved in that. All right, let's go ahead and have a group picture again. I was just telling the people that one of the reasons we do the photo is to get our steps in. Other than that, we probably wouldn't get our exercise in. All right, where are we at? Oh, we're up to closed session. Okay, closed session, please.
Item number one, conference with Leo Council pending litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A, 54954.9B3C. A, Maria Guadalupe Morales versus City of Southgate. B, Inez Lopez versus City of Southgate. C, Enrique Moreno versus City of Southgate.
Mr. City Attorney, any additional information?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me go ahead and open it up to the audience. If anybody wishes to speak on this, please step forward. Seeing no one stepped forward, we're going to go ahead and adjourn it to closed session. We'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
...
We are back from closed session. And we're going to wait for our city attorney to give us a report. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. In closed session, the city council had a discussion with legal counsel to discuss pending litigation. In closed session, one of the cases, Maria Morales versus the City of Southgate, involves the claim of an alleged trip on a city street. The city has denied responsibility for that, and the matter is scheduled to go to trial April 19th. There's no reportable action taken on that item. On Inez Lopez versus the City of Southgate, it's a claim of injury resulting from a car vehicle owned by the City of Southgate. The city received a report by the city attorney and by city staff in connection with that matter. And on a motion made by Councilmember Barone and seconded by Vice Mayor Davila on a vote of four to zero, the city council approved a settlement. The amount of the settlement is subject to review and approval by the city's Independent Risk Management Association, ICRMA. And disclosure of settlement amount will be made in conjunction with the Brown Act. On the matter of Enrique Moreno versus the City of Southgate, the city received a claim for injuries caused to Mr. Moreno, who was involved in a pedestrian versus motor vehicle accident. The city itself was not involved in or drove any of the vehicles there. On a motion made by Mayor Hurtado and seconded by Vice Mayor Davila, and on a vote of four to zero, the city council moved to deny that claim, Councilmember Avalos was excused and did not participate in closed session. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So at this time, I'm going to open up to the audience to speak on the items that were just brought forward by the city attorney. Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, a motion I'll second it. And without any negative, we're going to go ahead and close the meeting. Let me know when you're ready, Madam City Clerk. Okay, then, I'm going to go ahead and open the Tuesday, April 9, 2024 meeting. And it is now 6:46. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And the invocation will be by Pastor Maria Moscoso. Is she here?
Yes.
Oh, she's in disguise. Here we go. Please stand, and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Captain Manuel Arana.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the invitation. My excuse is that I have masked. I had a soot in my gums, and I am still in recovery, but here I am. So let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of the city. Lord, we pray for this council meeting tonight. Give them wisdom and guidance as they deliberate and they item before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for our benefits and for your glory. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Could you raise any things to our beautiful left? Put the right hand over your heart. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Okay, so roll call, please.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos is not present. Councilmember Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
He's here. He's a little distracted, but he's here.
Here.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay.
Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members, $790 monthly, regardless of the amount of meetings.
Thank you. Let's go to the public hearings. Item number one. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make the announcement for the Spanish translations. Hay personas que necesitan audífonos para la traducción en español. Tenemos audífonos en la área de atrás si necesitan traducción en español. It looks like nobody. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, item number one.
Following the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council will consider, A, adopting a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024-25 annual action plan; B, authorizing the city manager or designate to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development the fiscal year 2024-25 annual action plan; and C, authorizing the city manager and his designate to enter into an agreement with eligible subrecipients in a form acceptable to the city attorney.
Okay. Anna, you're doing the presentation.
Hi, Mayor. If I may, I'll just introduce Anna. So before you have the report, which was in the agenda, Anna will be speaking on it, but I just wanted to point out a little wrinkle from our normal procedure. The federal budget, which HUD is a part of, has not passed the budget yet. So in the report and in the resolution, we have a statement of an estimate of what we believe the amount will be. However, what we're asking for tonight is we have a recommendation of an allocation of how to allocate whatever fundings we get. And you can look at that, advise us differently, or agree with that allocation. If you're good with that, then we would take any amount that we receive from HUD and break it apart there. But with your permission on the allocation, be able to finish the report tonight and move forward. So I just wanted to highlight that wrinkle, pass it over to Anna. She'll be explaining the percentages in her presentation.
Thank you. Anna, welcome to Southgate.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. So we're here today to talk about the upcoming fiscal year's annual action plan, which is funded by HUD. And if we can go to the next slide? Thank you. So the purpose today is to open the public hearing, hear comment, if there's comment, close the hearing, and then consider adopting the fiscal year 2425 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, which we will refer to as CDBG, and the Home Investment Partnership Program, which we refer to as home funding. The estimates that you'll be seeing or the recommendations were provided to us through a process that included the Citizens Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the annual action plan, this is the upcoming fiscal year will be the fifth year of the consolidated plan. And your consolidated plan is a five-year document which identifies the city's goals and how they would like to see the funds that they receive for CDBG and home utilized in the community. It was adopted in September 2020. And then the purpose of the action plan is to identify and tell HUD how we plan on spending that money when we receive it. So we will go over the projects and the programs that were identified, make sure the objectives and the outcomes meet the compliance requirement by HUD and the national objective. And I guess the process included receiving city applications, which predominantly were from public services, which is what was reviewed by the CAC. Next slide. So as mentioned, these funds, CDBG funds, are funded by HUD. And as of today, the allocations have not come out because the federal government, as Mr. Houston mentioned, has not been approved. So we're allowed to adopt the plan. And once those allocations come out, we would be able to finalize the amounts and submit the plan to HUD. These funds provide a wide range of activities, including housing activities, community development, and economic development activities. The national objectives that we will be focusing on is the objective to assist benefit low and moderate income persons throughout the city. The other two national objectives are rarely utilized, and that's a whole different category. So we are anticipating receiving 1.4 million for fiscal year 2425 in CDBG funds, and we will prorate them equally based on your recommendations or adoption this evening. Next slide, please. Home funds also administered through HUD, by HUD. It's a formula that's applied to carry out eligible affordable housing activities. Some of those activities could include affordable housing construction or development, housing rehabilitation or repair, first-time homebuyer, down payment assistance, and tenant-based rental assistance. There is a CHODO requirement, which I'll go over with you. And we anticipate the allocation to be 740,000. And along with CDBG, these allocations have not been released yet. Next slide.
Can you do me a favor? Because I know that we've heard a lot of these terms before. You know, you mentioned CHODO and puzzled looks in the audience.
Sure.
Can you, like, when you talk about?
I will. Here's where I'm going to spend some time.
Okay, good.
Well, you know, grab a cup of water. Okay, so, yes, I know, it's a lot of acronyms, and there's a lot to talk about. So there are some requirements with how you can use the funds. There's a 20% cap for the use of funds to administer the program on the city's behalf. And out of that, 20% And out of that 20%, fair housing, which is a mandatory requirement, comes out of the administrative portion. So you can see that if we receive the 1.4 million, then we will have $280,000 of, that's allowed to be used for administration. And of that 24,000, or 1.7% of the budget, will be set aside for fair housing. And then the remaining will be set aside for the program administration, and that would equal about 18.3%. The public services cap is 15% of your allocation and program income. You do not have any program income to report this year, so we're only going to have your allocation. So it's 15% of that allocation, which is 210,000. The first column after the description is what was approved this current fiscal year. And then you can see what the CAC recommendations are in the second column. And the third column identifies the percentages of the total budget, if we were to receive 1.4 million. So upon the request graffiti abatement, CAC is recommending $102,240, or 7.31% of the budget. Comparte or Mental Health is requesting 18,260. That's equivalent to 1.31%. Family Violence Prevention Program is 27,000, 1.93%. Southgate Police Explorers is 23,500, 1.65%. And the College Internship Program is 24,000, which is 1.72%. And the newest one is La Cada Nuestra Casa, and that's going to be 15% at 1.0, I mean, 1.08% $15,000. So that combined will equal the 15% allocation, and that's for your public services. So the CAC wanted to see all of the applications funded, and this is the breakdown that they recommend to the council. For non-public services, the remaining balance can be used for various activities, like economic development or CIPs. We have, there's a commercial facade program that they'd like to allocate $546,000 to, and then the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Program. This is like a residential rehab program, but it's using CDBG funds. It will be for seniors, and they're requesting to allocate 364,000. So that would make up your 1.4 million, should you receive that allocation. Questions about this slide? Thoughts?
Just for clarity, it's for La Cada, it's 15,000, not 150,000, correct? Because an extra zero in there.
Well, the comma's in the right place, but you're right, there's an extra zero. It's $15,000.
Just making sure.
Yes, thank you.
And can we get an understanding of what La Cada is? I know it's a house, housing that helps with substance abuse, I believe?
Yes, so the program helps homeless residents with alcohol, drug, and mental health disorders. It will provide clinical needs assessment, treatment planning, individual and group treatment counseling, life skills education, meals, needed clothing, life skills, and the goal is that the client who is discharged from their treatment would be clean and sober and linked to transitional and permanent housing and job development. It also includes GED acquisition if they need that.
And where's that facility located?
It's here in Southgate. And they're anticipating, with that amount of money, they're anticipating to assist 50 persons. They have other funding sources. This is just one part of the funding sources. Within all of these programs, public services, you have to also have other funding sources. It can't be 100% CDBG-funded.
And then with the facade improvements for the commercial properties, do we have an idea of what that program is going to look like and what, how much per each facade improvement, or is it going to be kind of like, you know, they've submitted an application for a certain amount, and then we could approve it up to that amount?
Correct. So the facade improvement is going to partner along the SIGN improvement program. So this is just adding more funds to these two programs. And these programs are going to be focusing along Tweedy and Long Beach Boulevard. And it's to help businesses in the low-income census tract areas, the eligible census tract areas. If they're interested in applying, they can apply. They would receive up to $100,000 of grant funds to fix their facades. And I'm trying to remember. I think it's 25,000 for the SIGN, up to 25,000 for the SIGNS.
So we're offering 100,000, up to 100,000 per grant?
Only for facade.
For facade improvement? So that's one-fifth of, almost a fifth of the budget. So if somebody would max out each one, they would only get about five facades completed?
With these funds, but there's some funds already that last year were funds that were already programmed to this.
Okay, and the application process is with us, or is it going to be going through one of the business districts, or?
No, it's, the application process is here. Part of the funds for the SIGN program, for example, will be used to pay for part of a staff person to go out, but we've already started the outreach, and you have 14 applications. Seven for commercial facade, seven for SIGN.
And we do a, like, we go visit the location to make sure that, you know?
Oh, yeah. So there's a, there are guidelines, and there's a whole set of processes to follow that include the planning process and approval of the design with elevations that need to be developed by an architect. And those need to get approved by the planning Community Development Director.
Great. Thank you for that information.
Sure.
In the past, in the facade improvements, it would be a first-come, first-served, and I've raised the issue before that I think that the best way of handling it is who needs it the most? Because you have some businesses out there that really are in need of some improvement. And if they are not aware of this, they might not even apply for it. And I really think there has to be a better way of, instead of first-come, first-served, there are people who already, you know, they're always the first ones there. And I don't think it's fair that they will always get the same funding year after year while others are struggling. So what is the process you have?
Yeah, so I believe you brought this up before, and so because of that, we've done boots on the street. So we've had staff go out, and we've outreach to over 40 businesses on Tweedy and then Long Beach Boulevard. So those, also the businesses in Long Beach Boulevard that received small business assistance during COVID, when you had the CDBG CV, they were also revisited and explained about the, we explained the program to them. So so far, there's 40 businesses that are aware that we've actually provided the information. Out of the 40, I want to say like only a handful have declined, and then the rest are kind of deciding. And then, like I mentioned, we have, I think, I don't know, maybe 17 applications that have been submitted.
And just for clarification, it's not the property owners that are applying, or is it the actual businesses?
Either. If it's the tenant and they don't own the property, then the property owners also invite, they have to be invited to the process to authorize any, you know, any improvements to the building. So they'll be signing an agreement as well alongside the tenant. So it can be initiated by the tenant, or it can be initiated by the property owner.
And are you seeing any difficulties by the business owners reaching out to their landlord or property owners to get that taken care of together?
Not as of yet, but it's, it's the goal of the city to assist in that. We're not leaving it up to the tenant necessarily to do that. Because we need to make sure that the property owner is signing the documents and understands what's going to happen to their property.
Well, I'm happy that we're doing that because I think, you know, a lot of times the business owner is having difficulties reaching out to a lot of these landlords and property owners because, you know, we have a lot of absentee property owners and landlords here. So I'm happy that the city is actually doing that effort, reaching out to them and being able to help the business owners there and that.
Councilmember Rios?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anna, for the report. Just a couple of things.
And just so you know, I still have more slides. We're on CDBG, so just saying.
It's on this.
On the facade, yeah, I mentioned Tweedy. Are we doing anything in Hollidale? I mean, that is the other side of it.
We can absolutely focus there. The directive has been to focus on Tweedy and Long Beach because they're within the eligible census tract. So specific area, that makes it a lot easier to qualify. If you're outside of the low-income census tract map that HUD provides, then there's going to be additional steps for qualifying.
Thank you for clarifying that. I noticed the College Internship Program. Is that part of the leadership program with Lisa Baca that we, yeah, okay, I just wanted to, okay. Well, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Just a quick question regarding the COVID relief that it was given to the businesses. Say that a business was given some relief, but that business is no longer, I mean, the previous owners are not there anymore. There's a new tenant. Now, this new tenant wants to fix the facade. And, and I had that, the problem last year that this new business owners, they came to ask for information regarding this grant. And they told them that they couldn't apply for this grant, I mean, the facade, because they already had applied for the COVID relief fund.
No, there's no duplicate benefit. So that's, we have to always be careful that there's duplicate benefit.
But it's not the same, they're not the same owner. They're different tenants.
But even if it were the same tenant, they're two different programs. So if they participated in the Small Business Assistance Grant, they would still be eligible to participate in the commercial facade or the SIGN program.
Yeah, okay, because this is the second year that they've been coming to get information, and they tell them they cannot apply.
Have them ask for me, please, and maybe, maybe there's something else. I don't know why, so we can look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead with the presentation.
Next, okay, home, next slide. So home funding allocation is a little more simple. Anticipating $740,000. 10% is the administrative cap for home funds, so that's 74,000. We're setting aside $555,000 for an affordable housing development. It's not named, so when that does happen, we would have to come back and talk, you know, discuss that with you. But we are setting it aside, and there's a good amount of money that has been set aside for an affordable, to affordable housing developments. The CHODO is, it's a oh, this is a, you got me, Community Housing Development Organization, so.
Okay, you passed.
Thank you. So the board, this is, the board has to be comprised of a percentage of people that are also meet, you know, the low-income eligibility. So these are typically kind of nonprofit-style organizations, like Cesar Chavez. Habitat for Humanity has a nonprofit arm. So those are CHODOs, and they're required, it's required that the city set aside 15% for CHODO participation. And at this time, it's $111,000. And we were, for, during COVID period, we didn't have to do that, but now we're back on the normal schedule. So hope that helps to explain it and all of that. Any questions regarding the home allocations? Okay. So today, the recommended actions would be to open the public, you didn't open the public hearing yet, right?
Yeah, but we're gonna.
Okay, open the public hearing, listen to comment, close it, and then just give us direction on the funding recommendations so we can approve the action plan this evening. That we'll adopt the resolution, and then we will wait for the federal government to issue the allocations. If they change, we will adjust the allocations based on the percentages that you approved tonight. And then the submittal will be, you know, submitted to HUD. And we're also asking that you would give the city manager or his designee authority to execute the agreements with the public services and the different programs.
Okay, let me go ahead and open it up to the audience. If anybody in the audience wishes to speak on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. Council colleagues? On this item, none. Okay, any other questions?
No. Make motion to.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, just, I want to be clear that the motion also empowers the city manager's delegate to make adjustments based on the actual funding received on a prorated basis.
Right, because we're approving the percentages that were identified on the report.
Just want to make sure the record's clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. He always wants to keep us in line. I don't know why. Okay, we have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anna, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Okay, at this time, we're doing public comments. Comments from the audience on non-agendized items?
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk about the library again. I see that you've seen the goodies that I left for you. Happy National Library Week. So I hope you find some useful things in the bag, but don't forget, those bags are that small because they are meant for books. Please come and check out some books at the library this week, National Library Week. Just to go over a couple of things that we're going to be offering these next few weeks, just these next few weeks, we have a Del Conversation Club for adults wishing to improve their English language skills. We have a free Vexi clinic coming on Thursday. We have yoga for teens this Saturday, teaching them some healthy, healthy life skills. And next Tuesday, we have Dia de los Niños, and we're celebrating by playing Loturia. Then on Tuesday, April 24th, mark your calendars. It's the Friends of the Library used book sale, starting at 3:30, so you have plenty of time to visit the library, buy some nice used books, support the Friends of the Library, and then come to city council meeting. Thanks so much, council.
Thank you so much. And just for those that are new to the meetings, at this time, you get to speak your mind on anything that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes. And we don't respond on it if they're not agendized, okay? Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Hi, sorry. My name is Jasmine Valencia. I'm a student at USC, and I'm pursuing my master's in social work right now. I'm currently studying policy and advocacy, so a part of our final assignment is basically get into the politics, you know, see firsthand how it works. So I wanted to address homelessness, basically, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that and like a bit about implementation on how it can be a little bit more like fixed. So I noticed that Southgate does collaborate with LASSA, and I'm here to basically urge to consider adopting more community-centric solutions in addressing the issue of homelessness. So I know, like, there's, you know, mobile outreach teams. I know there's a lot of proposals that have been made to help the homeless population, and not just here, but, you know, in other cities, and a lot of, it's very like broad, and I wanted to talk more about giving more aid in terms of something that's more consistent and more engagement with our homeless population. So this would mean having familiar faces, providing connections, and building rapport, as receiving aid from strangers isn't always well-received by the population, and it could result in rejection of services. So sometimes, like, if you were to approach, you know, homeless person stating that, you know, you could give them, you know, a sort of service, they might not like you because they don't know who you are. And I have worked with the homeless population before, so I know how, how much rejection is received. So I'm basically proposing like an establishment of drop-in centers, creating safe spaces where homeless people can access basic necessities while receiving support throughout. So these centers would basically have necessities like just the basic essentials that you need, just like, you know, a lot of homeless people want toothbrushes, they want water, they want to have easy access to water, easy access to like, you know, keep themselves maintained and whatnot, but, and I know there's a lot of there's, there's a lot of people, like churches, I know that, or organizations that basically provide this, and that kind of rapport building and that connection building does get well-received by the homeless population. So from that- So from that, by embracing community-centric solutions, we can make a greater impact with homeless individuals and families, and it could basically lead them to take larger steps into gaining stability by knowing that they have people and a community that they can trust, and not just, you know, random strangers trying to say like, we're able to give you this A, B, and C, but not really having any rapport built prior. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so hi, everyone. My name is Marina Gutierrez, and I am also a grad student studying social work at USC. So this semester, we were given the assignment of researching a community of our choice. And considering that I am a current resident of South Central, I had a couple of different options to choose from when I came to choose in a community. But I really wanted to choose one that signifies something to me, and this to me was the city of Southgate. I spent a lot of my childhood here, playing sports at your vocational parks. And I also have spent a lot of my adulthood here shopping at your local shopping center, Azalea. So it only made sense to me to dig deeper into a community that I spent a good chunk of my life in. And after taking the time to research the city, I found some things that really alarmed me. So some of these things were the higher rates of crime within the community, and also the lack of access to healthcare within your residents. A couple of weeks ago, I took the time to watch your past city council meetings, and I noticed that a lot of the residents felt unsafe within the community, and they also mentioned that they're having issues with mold. So despite the fact that I'm not a resident of Southgate myself, I did feel the need to come here today to encourage you all to take the comments of your residents seriously. And your residents also don't have the privilege of accessing basic healthcare if they do fall ill due to the mold in their homes. So I just feel like this is something that you guys should really take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good evening. My name is Odalis Navarro, and I'm also a student at University of Southern California, and I'm also pursuing a master's degree in social work. And I'm currently taking a course in advocacy and policy. And so a part of my assignment is to also advocate for a specific community, and I chose Southgate. Southgate is a community that my parents lived in when they immigrated to the United States, and it has always been a city that holds a lot of many memories for me. As I began to further dive into the research about this community, I noticed and I discovered that there's like a limited access to healthcare. More specifically, there are limited hospitals for the residents of Southgate. And I found this very alarming because I believe that access to healthcare should be everyone's first priority, and as well as the residents of Southgate should not have to worry about being able to access a nearby hospital in their city. So residents of Southgate have to heavily rely on their neighboring communities like Linwood, Bell Gardens, and Downey to access a hospital to get treated. And that was very alarming for me to research. And this is upsetting, and it's not an ideal situation for anyone, let alone the people in this community. And like all in all, I just wanted to bring more awareness and support to this community to implement change and build more hospitals within the area. And this is an urgent matter, and I ask the city council to consider making this a top priority to help this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Odalis.
Good evening, counsel. Liz Ruiz from Coffman Avenue. I'm here today to just cordially ask if there's an update on the sidewalk revisions that are happening on Long Beach and Tweedy. I know Councilmember Al Real also brought it up at the last council meeting, I believe, the concern with the pebbly area on the corner. That I'm pretty sure, and I've actually seen people, little kids, students coming from the middle school and high school, you know, just walking all over it and what a hazard it is. And just whether there's any consideration to change that type of model as a crosswalk, just because it seems very impractical. And I know that you guys are going to be talking about other crosswalk redevelopment projects in the city. And I also wanted to commend the city on the tree trimming, at least in my area. With the recent windstorms, I did see less branches all over, so I'm very grateful for that. And the other thing with the air quality concerns, I know that Al Real's also mentioned a smell that has been kind of, and I've noticed since I've moved to the east side of the city, it's kind of, I don't know if it's a solvent. I actually thought it had to do with the fertilizer that used to be kept kind of by the Thunder Villa. I think it was like some sort of, I honestly don't know what kind of business it was, but I noticed it's not there, so I'm kind of curious if there's been any citywide investigation, if there's any other people that smell it. You could also always call the 1-800-SMOG number for the Air Quality Management District, and they can try to help figure out where it's coming from, which, you know, I would suggest other folks do if they live in that area and smell it. But, and it's all random, too, so I don't even know how to figure out where it's coming from. But I know that the city has had meetings, community meetings with, I believe, a facility that used to kind of have us, I think it was that fertilizer storage place near...
That's the UWS site, right, I think is what you're talking about.
The what?
The UWS site.
I thought so.
No, that's what you're referring to, that's the area that was addressed before.
Okay. Yeah, so I don't know if it's still the same smell, though, is what I'm saying, but yeah, those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Liz. We didn't see the little one here with you today. Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. You have some emails you...
Those are for item number two.
Oh, okay, good. All right, let's go ahead and go around the room, and if there's anything that was brought up tonight that you can kind of sort of just comment on, you're welcome to do so. Again, those were not agendized items, and we don't, we can't really discuss them because it would be a violation of the Brown Act. Okay, let's go ahead and start. William Campana, we're going to start with you. Welcome tonight. We'll go with you first.
I have nothing to report.
That's why I started with you. I hope it's contagious. Oh, no. Steve Costley, you're next.
Since William didn't report anything, I get his time, right?
Oh, no. No, go ahead, Steve. Take third time.
All right. Just putting on my Commission for Southgate youth hat, we will be having our scholarship and Student of the Year awards coming up on May 20th. At this time, we are encouraging all of our principals at the schools to turn in their nominations for Students of the Year. We met last Monday, Tuesday, yesterday.
Yesterday.
Last Monday. We met yesterday, and we talked to all the teachers and principals there about that. We're also offering a number of scholarship awards for this year, and we've acquired a number of partners that are joining us in this, so it will be a bigger event. It will take place on the 20th at 6 o'clock in the auditorium. We're still in the process of receiving applications for scholarships, so we're going to encourage anyone online, in the audience, or if you know anyone, especially for seniors in high school, or those who may be like freshmen's or sophomores in college, if they want to apply for it, if they're from Southgate, they can get funding again. So we've got a lot of that going on. Second, this Sat, last Saturday, we opened our newest art exhibit called Hometown Heroes. It's in place at the Art Museum, Art Gallery Museum next door. Please feel free to go on over, take a look at the different ones. With that, we also put up a art exhibit from LAUSD's Southgate High School. The students there, we got a call from the principal, and we've accommodated in the foyer over there of putting up their artwork for the, from the semester. So a lot of great artwork in there, so come on by the museum for those type of things, or the art gallery. And the only other thing is the fencing project, which has been ongoing for a while now. Mother Nature has been interrupting, but our hope is by this Friday, Diamond One will be done. We'll get that one ready. We are still working on all the rest of Diamonds. The small quad, which is Diamonds Five, Six, Seven, and Eight, are all complete, except for the home run markings on the fence. And then we will be completing the large quad, Diamonds Two, Three, and Four, once we complete Diamond One, which will be in plenty of time for the Junior Athletics Association opening day on May 4th. And that's all I got.
Well, but, you know, you mentioned all those fences, but you also have the fences around the tennis courts. Those look fantastic.
Those are the, those were the first ones we've got done. We're still going to be putting up fences around the Aquatic Stadium, the Diamonds Nine and Ten, the horseshoe pits, and around the golf course, not the whole golf course, but the 60-foot fence that sits in between the golf course and the playing Diamonds, and then the back fence area where the Boy Scout huts are. So all of that should be getting fencing. We're a tad behind because Mother Nature has played a big role in it this year, a lot of rain, but it's moving forward, and it looks really good.
Yeah. If I may, I had to talk to some young people yesterday at Diamond Six. They were practicing their hitting into the fence. We might need to put some signs up there to tell people that it's not to be used for that reason, just to protect the fences.
I totally agree with you. I've chased off a few people myself, and we'll look at that. Not that everyone actually pays attention to the signs, but we can maybe...
But it's hard, it's easier to enforce if there's a sign up there. I mean, common sense tells you they shouldn't do it, but I think if we put a sign, at least we...
We'll be working on that.
Okay, thank you. Art Cervantes, you're up.
Mayor, thank you. I don't think Steve used all his time, so I want to use his leftover time.
No.
Mine. So, yeah, so if I can ask the city clerk to put up the CIP update slide. I just have one slide for you tonight. I want to just mention as that slide is going up that the city has a very healthy CIP program. The city has always had that in my nine years here with tens of millions of dollars in projects. This year, it's over $104 million with over 70 projects. The difference this year is that you have many projects under construction, many large projects under construction that have been underway for many years on the design side in the community, seeing a lot of these coming together with priorities everywhere. First thing I want to mention is that every single project has a public outreach program with a very specific point of contact with a webpage. And so anytime the public needs information on any of our projects, whether it's schedule, budget, features, or what have you, I'd like to invite the public to contact the Public Works Department, contact the public outreach coordinators, or contact our, or make, go on the city's website for some of that information. Tonight, I wanted to provide you just a very brief overview of some projects that I consider priority projects and underway to address the mayor's comments from last time that residents are looking for construction schedules, and that's the only purpose of this project. Firstly, there's a number of projects that we recently completed that were residents were previously talking about, which were the improvements on Tweedy Boulevard to synchronize traffic signals, the, you know, multimillion-dollar second-phase project on Firestone Boulevard where we extended some of the same improvements, like bus shelters and other, the residential resurfacing projects. Those were actually three projects combined that were completed. So all of the work on the residential neighborhoods have been completed. Additional, the sidewalk work that we were completing in combination with those projects are now completed as well as is the water main replacement project. So the public should know that those are substantially done. Projects that are currently under construction, the first three that you see up there are water-focused. The first has been under construction for some time. Construction is going to be completed next month. The community doesn't really see the impact of that, which is rehabilitating our reservoirs. That's a multimillion-dollar project that is going to address system issues. We're also getting ready to start construction on residential neighborhoods, as well as Tweedy and other streets, on our second phase of the water main replacement project. That's going to start construction later this month and be completed in August. The AMR, where we're going to replace nearly 1,800 water meters, that'll start construction next month and be completed in August. The Long Beach Boulevard and Garfield Avenue Complete Streets projects will be completed in June of this year. And then the Urban Orchard Project and Holliday Community Park Project, both those projects are on hold. They're nearly complete, they're at about the 90% completion level, but there's some issues that we have to work through. And finally, other priority projects, we're getting ready to bid construction of the Tweedy Mile Complete Streets Project. That'll be bid at the end of this month, likely starting construction sometime in early summer. The Circle Park Renovation Project, that project is substantially completed design. We're just waiting for Southern California Edison approval, so that starts, we would likely bid that project sometime this summer. And then other major projects is the one that residents frequently ask about. That's the I-710 freeway, Firestone Boulevard, Southbound, Enramp Realignment Project. We're completing design shortly here in June, likely starting construction sometime in early 2025, because we're going to be waiting for a Caltrans approval. And then the second phase of the Tweedy Mile Complete Streets project start, is under design now. That'll be completed next year, probably early in March, and which we would likely be starting construction sometime in the summer. So this is my schedule overview on a lot of our projects that are happening throughout the city, but I would really encourage the general public to reach out to the Public Works Department directly anytime they have comments. I did want to address Liz Ruiz's comments regarding the cobblestone on Long Beach Boulevard. There's a misunderstanding of what that cobblestone is. The cobblestone is a feature that cities are using actually to dissuade pedestrians from walking in certain areas that aren't safe or don't meet ADA compliance standards. We had an issue of procurement by the contractor where the contractor wasn't able to relocate the push buttons on time, which created a need for residents to walk on them. And that was really a miss by a contractor. But we've since relocated those push buttons, pedestrians don't have to walk on there. And we've also covered those with asphalt concrete to keep folks out. But we are looking at options to change that out. And in the near future, we will be addressing each location that they have them. But the public should know, those are not intended for walking. Those are to keep pedestrians out of those areas because they're not safe to walk in. Thank you.
Is it possible that we have that on our website and probably given to Giselle to kind of...
Yeah, we did publish something on social media. We can add something to the website.
Thank you. Art, thank you for the update. Okay, Wendy.
Good evening. Administrative Services Department just has a simple update. We're going to be coming to council in the next coming months with the year budget for fiscal year '24, '25, so look forward to those meetings with everyone. That's it.
Yeah, and, huh?
So that's not a simple update.
Well, okay. John?
Sure. We're recruiting, as always, for the city of Southgate, so go to citiesouthgate.org, click on the Jobs tab for community development. We have some great opportunities in our Planning Division, Assistant, Associate, and Senior Planner. Police Department, always looking for police officers, police recruits. We'll put through the academy for police recruits and brand-new officers, $15,000 signing bonus. And if you're a lateral, $20,000. We're also looking for a senior management or administrative management analyst, budget, the, you know, some of the brains behind the operation. So we're looking for a great person to fill that position. Public Works, we're looking for an engineering technician, journey electrician, and a street maintenance worker, so that's a full-time position, so that's a great position for somebody. And finally, in our Parks and Rec, we're looking for lifeguards. So for those who are ambitious and want to get out there for the summer, perfect job, and as also a recreation leader, too, a groundskeeper. So that's what we got going.
Thank you. Captain?
Thank you, sir. I only have an invitation. We have two community events coming up. The first one is on Sunday, April 14th, and it's going to be our Autism Awareness Event. It's going to be at the park, at the auditorium, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And our second event is the, it's a Coffee with a Cop. It's on Wednesday, April 17th, at the Starbucks at Garfield and Firestone. And that one is from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Two items, Mayor and counsel. One is just giving an update on the Azalea Festival Car Show that was to be held last week. Um, in consultation with our staff, um, we were looking at the, uh, registered vehicles for the event, and I think due to a number of issues, including the weather, uh, it was, um, much lower than would make a successful event, so the, uh, deter, it was determined that it would be best to, uh, reschedule the event for a later date, so we are working with the, uh, operators of the event, the Tweeter Mile, Tweedy Mile Association, to see if there is a date, maybe later in July, where we could allow them to reschedule that, we're just trying to work out the logistics, but just wanted to help everyone understand, um, that, uh, we are seeing if we can find another date. So, that's an update on the car show. Um, the other item is, that was, um, requested amongst some other items, and I just wanted to get some clarification from Council, was on looking at the rates, uh, paid for some of our commissioners, so the Planning Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, and our Citizen Advisory Committee. So, just as a quick review, the Planning Commission, uh, is paid currently $125 a meet, uh, meeting, Parks and Rec, $75 a meeting, Citizen Advisory Commission, $25 a meeting. Um, and the thought was perhaps this could be brought back as an item for council review, just getting clarity that that would be something you'd like to see. And, um, in a brief bit of research out there, um, surrounding cities, the range for planning commissions, um, you know, sort of $50, $75, 100, there is one city at 200, but, you know, we're kind of in the range. Parks and Rec ranges from, um, 50 to, there's a $100, uh, one, but 75 is kind of in the range. And I couldn't really find a lot of information on citizen advisory committees, there's a lot of unique committees that every city has with different names, so that one's a tough one to get comparables on. But, um, these are items that could be brought back, or the, you know, this could be brought back for some decision of Council would like at the next meeting, I just want to get clarification, that would be something you're interested in.
Yes, I, I would suggest that we do.
Okay.
Have a discussion on that.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, you're up to bat.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to let you know that our next city council meeting, I will be absent, attending a legislative summit in Washington, D.C., and Jerry Ruiz will be coming back, you haven't seen him in a while, but he'll be.
He's a very nice man.
Yeah. Exactly.
So are you, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, no, yeah, we, I think some of you, some of us, uh, 40% of us missed you last time. Just kidding. He's looking at me kind of serious. Okay, uh, Madam City Clerk.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, everyone. I would like to, um, correct, a correction for the record, um, just to Councilwoman Avalos's excuse from tonight's meeting and not absent, that's one. And then I had the honor of attending the City Clerks Association 2024 conference, uh, last week, um, in which there was, um, many sessions, one of the ones that I went to was process and best practices, just for example, um, connecting citizens to local government and, um, navigating, navigating the California Legislature. Um, there was presentations regarding, um, transforming the municipal clerk profession into, with the help of AI, um, there's lots to do with that, it's very interesting topics. Um, aside from all of the presentations and any sessions, it's a great experiencing, experience mingling with other, um, city clerks, establishing relationships, which are helpful, um, in this line of work. So, thank you very much, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, City Treasurer?
Uh, nothing new to report, but I just wanted to, um, yeah, I guess, just make a, a quick comment and, you know, but before that, just wanted to ask our admin director just two, two questions, just for a point of clarity, uh, from the previous meeting and just, you know, just clarity for the general public. You know, the first one was, you know, are we currently facing a deficit this year? Because there seems to be some confusion on the social networks. And, uh, the second one, you know, do we currently have a healthy reserve for this year? Uh, just yes or no for those, it's fine, but just wanted to clarify for those that are at home, watching in the live stream, and others that might listen to it in the future.
The first question, are we currently facing a deficit? The answer to that is no, for the fiscal year that we are closing, this June 30th, 23, 24, we will end with a balanced budget, as we adopted, um, we will end with actuals balanced as well. Um, the second question, can you re, the reserves?
Yes.
So, I believe it was the, um, budget for fiscal year 22, 23, when we were able to put $13 million away, um, in our reserve balance, that is still available as well.
Uh, thank you, and just, you know, to remind everyone, you know, we are in an election year, so, you know, question everything, you know, read everything twice, ask a lot of questions, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Okay, let's go around the room, up here, Dr. Barone, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to, uh, first, uh, talk about, uh, an event that we have scheduled for June 28th, uh, as the charter president for the Seela Kiwanis, we're going to be having our charter, um, banquet that day on June 28th. Uh, more, uh, information and details to follow, but I just wanted everybody here and in, members of the audience to mark your calendar, because as president, I am requiring everybody in this room to be there. Uh, can I do that? Rob, I'm sorry.
You have to make a motion. It's not on the agenda.
But I would definitely love to see, uh, a lot of familiar faces there, so if you are available on that day, please, uh, attend, and I, I will be able to bring back information once we get all the details taken care of. Um, here, uh, in the city, I just wanted to, uh, remind everybody that, um, you know, we do have a lot of, uh, sports programs out that is, is getting ready to start up, the Southgate Junior Athletic Association, uh, baseball and softball season, we are just finishing up our, um, our spring clinics, getting ready for our tryout dates, and then we'll have teams, uh, kind of, you know, issued out within the next, uh, couple of weeks. So, anybody who is registered and hasn't received a phone call yet, you should receive a phone call no later than, uh, than the first week of May. Uh, so just, if you have that issue, you can always contact us here at the, uh, the Junior Athletic Association there at the park. Uh, their hours are Monday through Thursday from 6:00, uh, p.m. to 8, uh, well, 7:30 p.m. on Monday through Thursday, and then Saturdays from 9:00 to 12:00, uh, for more information. But also, the youth, uh, football league, the Aztecs, are starting their signups, and they're doing, uh, early signups, um, with a discounted rate, so any family that's interested in that, please reach out to the, uh, the Youth Football Aztecs on their social media, and they're currently practicing, I believe at Hollidale, is that right, uh, Steve? So, they're practicing at Hollidale. Uh, so that's great. Uh, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Rios.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, um, I mentioned some activities, uh, actually, the Seela Civic Leaders met yesterday to, I don't know if you recall, we had a university sent off last year at, at our park, and we're going to do it again this year, and, uh, so we already scheduled it for June 1st. It's going to probably be in Bell, City of Bell, we did it here in Southgate, so, uh, it's, it's basically, uh, we recognize those, uh, seniors in high schools that are going on to universities, and so we're giving them some support network so that when they go, you know, it's nav, how to navigate life at the university. So, uh, we did it last year, and it was all the electives from the southeast that got together, maybe some of my colleagues were there, so we're going to do that again June 1st. Uh, I wanted to mention some activities at the college, uh, on Monday, uh, April 15th, 12 to 3, we have a, a food, uh, bank, regional bank distribution, so, for folks that are needing, I'll, I'll send a flyer over to, uh, Giselle to post it. Um, at La Cada, they mentioned La Cada, we got a, we just, I just got, we got funding through our, uh, addiction study program at the college, um, to, uh, offer a program for a cohort of 30 people that are experiencing substance abuse and all that, so there's money that gives them a, it's like, they take class, uh, in September through November, and they get about $300 a week, they get, uh, a lot of support, so I was thinking La Cada might could be something I could work with to make that happen. But the good news is, uh, the, uh, we have some, uh, the college also received another award with New Economics for Women, I don't know if you know, heard of them, but they do a lot of good work in L.A. And, um, yeah, uh, we're, we're going to get a, we got a Women's Business, uh, Center grant for the area here at the college, and the unfortunate thing is with, with the college, during the time, it's going to start in May of this year, and so it's to serve this area to help women establish entrepreneurial businesses and so forth, uh, so really, it's an exciting opportunity. So, we're going to be, I'm a meeting with, uh, some nonprofits, see what we could be, uh, locate the, 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 some of the staff to begin, because our college won't be built till sometime middle of next year, uh, 2025, so just keep that in mind, I'll, I'll have more updates, but if anybody has any ideas of, I would like to have it in Southgate somewhere, but I know it could go anywhere else too, because it's a regional, uh, award.
Uh, on that, uh, Councilman Rios, did you want to mention what schools are going to be, be in use for, uh, classes?
No, for the small business, the women's center?
No, 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 for the, uh, East L.A., uh, college, uh, student classes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, oh, okay, so, uh, actually, on the 16th, for those folks that are interested, uh, April 16th, uh, it's next Thursday, I believe, um, if you're interested in learning where the, uh, the situation with the college is in terms of the move, because we're going to be out of that facility June, um, sometime early June, so, uh, on April 16th at 6 o'clock, we're having a meeting, uh, we're inviting students and community to come, so we'll share, uh, what we have planned, uh, part of the plan consists of being at, at the high school, we have, we're going to lease some, some modules there, some classrooms, eight classrooms there, and six classrooms at, um, Odyssey High School, so that's the plan, but we'll, we could talk more about the shuttle service that's going to happen and everything, all of the other support services, so if I could share that, if folks are interested, on the 16th at 6 o'clock at the Southgate Camp, East L.A. College, that, you're welcome to attend. Uh, and then April 20th, uh, with, uh, in partnership with, uh, SoCalCAN and ABC, these are two nonprofits, we're doing a Cash for College, um, and that's Saturday, uh, from 10 to 2, and I don't know if you know, but this year around, it was a little confusing over the financial aid application, they changed the form, and so they extended the deadline, so, uh, we have people that understand the form and all of this, so those people that didn't, haven't applied yet, they extended the deadline through early May, so, uh, on the, uh, on the 20th, you're welcome to come, and you'll get assistance with the form right there and then, so, uh, just wanted to share those things, um, that's it.
Hey, thank you, uh, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quick, uh, just, uh, we had the, uh, the last, uh, School Safety Collaborative Meeting yesterday with the principals, um, and, uh, and, yeah, Steve mentioned that, um, about the scholarships, so that was also presented, but one of the things that, uh, really stood out yesterday was the, uh, a number of students who were absent, uh, yesterday due to the eclipse. Um, it's amazing. You know, the beliefs of, uh, areas, it's their own personal beliefs, but, uh, one of the highest numbers that, um, that they had, it was one of the middle schools, I'm not going to mention the middle school, but it was 293 students absent. And the other schools, 150, 183, the lowest was 95, numbers on student absence. So, um, thank God we're not getting another eclipse anytime soon, so, but, uh, that was, uh, that wa, that happened yesterday. And, uh, other than that, this Thursday, I will be at Stanford, and, um, career day, so I will be, um, I will be there.
Thank you. I'll be joining you on that one as well. Uh, so, a couple of items real quick, um, uh, met with some seniors at the Senior Center, they're very happy, but they have a couple of things that they want to, uh, address, one of them is they need a, a new TV, and I think you're working on that already, and they have some, uh, questions about some dance instructors or music. Let's see if you can, uh, somehow address their concerns, reach out to them. Um, how soon will we have the new camera ready, the new system ready and installed?
Um, the update is we have the equipment, we are getting, uh, our Public Works yard folks, uh, to set up a stand made out of wood, so it, we don't have to drill into our historical banister, they're working on that, but, um, we have all the equipment now, so the plan is in the next two weeks before the next meeting, the wiring will all be put in, uh, we'll, if we don't have the banister already, we'll have a tripod with the new camera and the other camera, that'll provide access to seeing the speakers, um, will be there, plus the, the switching that'll allow us to be able to see, uh, the current picture of the council, switch to the speaker, and then switch also to the PowerPoint, so you'll, you'll have those different views. And, um, our clerk will have to get, uh, maybe those little rubberized fingertip, um, guards, so she's doing the little switching, uh, she'll be our, our switchboard operator, um, but the plan would be to have that at least in a trial mode for next meeting.
Yeah, and the biggest question was not necessarily the, the visual and stuff, but it was the presentations that, uh, I'm hearing from people in the community that they're not able to see some of the presentations, and hopefully this'll solve that. Uh, let's see, what else, the swim, uh, group, uh, the swim stadium, so they're looking for the touchpads, and they're also looking for, I'm going to reach out to our technical expert here, they're looking for something that kind of sort of, where they can see the, the scores or their times on the board, and I understand that that has a very hefty price to that, but, you know, that's what we had been told about the cameras once before, and he found a way of doing the cameras at a much, uh, affordable rate, so let's see if there's something that we can do, um, you're expert in that. And the last thing is, uh, tonight's meeting, we're going to adjourn in the memory of, uh, Ms. Mary Johnson, she passed away recently, uh, longtime member of our community, a member of, uh, parent U-turn, always advocating for, uh, children's education. Uh, I had the privilege to coach her sons in, uh, basketball, and, you know, I, I use that word coached very loosely, because the, the young men were fantastic, uh, to them was just put them in the lineup and then they, they took over, but you can tell they were raised really well by Ms. Johnson, uh, as talented as they were. Uh, once we had a huge lead, they would tell some of the other players that didn't have a lot of experience, go to the corner, I'll pass you the ball, shoot, don't worry about missing, we'll get the rebound, we'll pass it back. They tried to involve the other kids in it, and to me, that was really, really good. And then when the opponents were coming in and we had a, a hefty lead, they would allow some of the other, uh, children on the other team to go in for a shot, they wouldn't try to block it or anything, but you can tell that they understood that it's a recreational game and everybody should feel happy about competing. Uh, so, Mary Johnson will, will be missed, but not forgotten, and I have a certificate that I signed, I got to make sure that, uh, Chief Davis, excuse me, oops, uh, take two, uh, Chief Arakawa. I saw a different face here today, and, uh, I apologize for that, uh, but we got to make sure that we get that to, uh, the family. Okay? Thank you, and that's all I have. Uh, so let's go on to consent calendar, please.
Consent calendar items, ooh, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 are consent calendar items.
Okay, let me open it up to the audience first.
Um, for Liz Reese on Kaufman, for item number three, if you guys could talk about what the progress has been so far, uh, I drive through the freeway and kind of get a sneak peek at the Urban Orchard routinely, and, and see that there has been some, some movements, I'm wondering, um, you know, what still needs to be done, uh, what's the progress with the soils investigation, the soil gas investigation? Um, and for item number four, the 10-year franchise renewal for Tesoro SoCal Pipeline Company, um, I understand you guys will be scheduling a hearing for that, um, and, um, just want to make sure that that's going to happen, um, and, uh, whether it's going to be, uh, I, I guess I'm assuming it's in-person only, as all the meetings now are, um, but express my concern with, in question of why they're seeking a 10-year agreement versus, I believe it's currently five years. Um, I, I didn't see that on the resolution, any reason why? Um, item number five, uh, terminate the company working at the whole Hollidale Community Park project, what's going on with that, why did they fall behind, and whether they're going to be, uh, receiving any sort of, uh, penalties for, for them kind of just dropping the, the work? Um, and item number nine, um, just a question about the sidewalk, I believe there's a, a section of, of Little Alameda that I believe there's a, a section of Little Alameda that doesn't have a sidewalk, and whether it's going to go all the way through to, through the city limits. Because I've, I've actually driven by, especially when I used to live on that side, and saw kids kind of on the, on the street a lot, and, and, you know, which is really concerning, especially during rainy days when it would get all muddy there. So, and, you know, especially with cars driving like maniacs on that street. But yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. You have?
I have two emails for item number two.
Thank you.
The first email is from Claudia Rivera, and her question is for the city manager, and why does the agenda still state the old salary for city council? And then also, I received one from Andrea, Ms. Andrea Polino, and she, she wants clarification on the $1,900 for item number two. And the $1,900, does that include the vehicle allowance, communication and phone allowance? Because there was no mention of it on the staff report. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. You can address some of those?
Sure, Mayor. And counsel, I can address the two items that were just brought up through the clerk. The proposal for the second reading of the ordinance for city council stipend is with the proposal that it takes in effect after the next election, which would be December of this year. So the current amount of $790 per month is the amount received now and will be remaining on the agenda until such time the, any changed amount is active, and then at that point it would change. So the agenda reflects the correct monthly stipend for council members at this time. The second item being the focus of the bill that was mentioned for changing city compensation in order to encourage a more diverse and expansive group of people to apply for city council positions was focused entirely on these stipend dollar salary amount and did not speak to any of the allowances or additional benefits that were also received by many council members. So the focus was only on the 790 converting to the 1,900 amount, and it did not include any other benefits that council might receive. Hopefully that clarifies things.
Yeah, those. And how about the comments made by Ms. Liz Ruiz?
Mayor, I can address all of those comments. They're all on Public Works items. Firstly, regarding the progress on the Urban Orchard project, when construction was stopped, there were a number of things that we had to do, and we've made a lot of progress since. One is the county requirements that included soil testing and submitting a report and then applying for a PC, a CPLUP, which is otherwise approval to continue construction. We've since completed the soil testing. We've submitted the final report to the county. We received limited comments. We're addressing the comments. The county is allowing us to proceed with submitting the application for the approval, and at this point in time, it's just a matter of time, which time unfortunately takes a few months to get through approval, but things are looking favorable on the construction side. We've also since completed an additional $3 million worth of work. The latest was this weekend, this past week, we just, Southern California Edison provided power to the site, so the park safety lights will be up and running in the near future. So after that, it's just a matter of going through the approval process to be able to start construction. On the Tesoro Pipeline public hearing, the question was, are we going to hold a public hearing? Yes, we're going to hold a public hearing, and the date is being advertised on the staff report, at which point in time we can collect more input from the public regarding the proposed ordinance. The question of why 10 years instead of five years? Firstly, the municipal code actually provides for 25-year franchise agreements. In the past, we've traditionally done 10-year agreements. I think six or seven that we have. I think five of the seven are 10 years. The others are five years, but we're chosen to revert back to the 10-year practice, which has been a long-time practice. As part of that, we require an initial fee and a annual fee, and then the fee has an annual increase anyway through CPI, which would not change, and that would continue even if we renewed for five years. So we've chosen to go with the 10-year franchise to match the long-time practice. Regarding the termination of the contract with, on the Holliday Community Park renovation project, we've, unfortunately, the contractor has experienced some issues. We're not quite certain what those specific issues are, but we know what the impact is, is that at one point in time, after they reached about 80% completion on the project, they drastically reduced their resources and drag, and progress on construction drastically slowed. We sent them a number of notices, a notice to cure, and everything that we were required to do contractually to keep the contract going, including putting them on notices of liquidated damages, damages, which is not necessarily a penalty, but a charge to the contractor for costs the city would incur. At this point in time, they're at about $818,000 in that. And our development, we responded initially with some response and then just stopped and was working one day here with one employer, two. And so then they're just no longer working on the site. At this point in time, they're non-responsive, so we're recommending that we terminate the contract. They're officially in default so that it'll allow us to pursue the bond company and start the process again to get us towards completion of the project. So that's why we're recommending termination. And with regards to the project on Alameda Street, the report that you see tonight is actually completion of the project. So what, the improvements that are out there is what we're going to construct. We'll take a look at Little Alameda to see where the sidewalk is missing, but that was not a part of this project, but we will take a look at. This project was heavily focused on improving school pedestrian access for students to Simone Rodeo School, so it was limited to just that area and that industrial area that had the missing sidewalk. So that goal has been accomplished. But we'll look at Little Alameda to see if additional sidewalk is miss, is missing and what we can do to add it.
Thank you. Is that covering everything?
Yeah, those are all the comments. I believe I covered all of the comments that she made.
Okay, thank you. Counsel colleagues?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Motion and second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Orzado?
So here we go. Yes, but I have to... I want to make sure that's on record, okay? So yes, but I have to recuse myself from item number three. It's dealing with the Urban Orchard, and that's too close to my property. And item number six also covers Garfield Avenue, which is too close to my property. So I'm recusing myself from three and six, but yes, on all the others.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item number 11.
The city council is requested to consider adoption of the resolution making certain findings that a retired police captain in charge to be hired for temporary part-time employment commencing within the 180-day wait period from his retirement from the city of Southgate.
Okay, who's got this? John?
Yeah, good evening. Real quick, the Pension Reform Act of 2012 prohibits the city from hiring back a retired annuitant, that'd be somebody who retired within CalPERS, to come back and perform work within the 180 days of their retirement. The subsequent legislation permits that 180-day rule to be accepted if it's brought before council, and by resolution, council approves the hiring back of this particular individual. The individual of concern is former captain in charge Jim Teeples, who during his time here, his responsibility involved personnel, administration, budgeting, and other sort of very key background components of the operation of the police department. At the same time that Captain Teeples was retiring, we also had the retirement of a very long-tenured, I believe 34-year employee, who was our senior administrative analyst, the very position we are still recruiting for now. It's a highly specialized position. It functions in the area of budgeting, finance, accounting within the police department, so it's, it's been rather difficult for us to find a qualified person, but we are actively looking. And then in February, we lost our intermediate account clerk. And so we've sort of had this perfect storm of people that have left the organization for normal, natural reasons, but with the budget coming up and the need, this emergency need that we have to have somebody put into place who has that skill set, that's capable of putting together the budget and time and assisting the city and the police department, this is why we're coming to council, asking for this exception to the 180-day rule to rehire Jim Teeples as a retired annuitant to function the capacity to assist the police department, the city with the, with the formation of the department's budget. And once we can hire this senior, the replacement, the new incumbent to the position, Captain Teeples will then train that individual. He'll be brought back not as a captain, he'll be brought back in the capacity as retired annuitant and paid in the range, which is the top range of what the hourly rate would be for the senior administrative analyst. And for that, we're asking for a resolution of council to approve the rehire of captain in charge Jim Teeples.
Okay, thank you. Let me open this up to the audience. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. Mr. City Attorney, this seems appropriate. I want to make sure that we're not in, and everybody loves Captain Teeples. Love to see him back, and especially in this very critical time of setting the budget. Are we okay in, in this legally?
Yeah, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Hamilton on this issue. We're well within the timeframe here. Everything appears to be in order. There is a need for his expertise, and I see no problem with the city council moving forward with this.
Thank you so much. I feel a little bit better about the whole thing. Just knowing that Teeples is available and willing to come back at this very critical time is phenomenal. So, okay, any other comments?
Just wondering if the PD would like to weigh in on, on, you know, his expertise, on what he's done in the past to be able to assist in this and be able to bring him back, and how that's going to be an asset for us.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, we're actually very excited about having him coming back, specifically because we do have a void in the administration of our police department. And as we're negotiating the budget for next fiscal year, and we're having a void in recruitment, he brings 30 years of experience.
Excellent.
And so, yeah, we're looking forward to having him back and helping the administration services of our police department.
Yes, Mayor. Captain, so I guess there's no additional appropriation, right? Because there's salary savings in some of the positions, right? So that, that's good. 180 days, does that mean, he just seems like he's just retired, doesn't he? Do you have to wait 100 days or a waiver for that? I mean...
Yeah, he retired on December 2nd of 2023, and under the law, you have to wait for 180 days. If it was past 100, which would bring us to, I think, June 2nd. But after 180 days, we can, as long as we have the position, we can just bring them back without city council action. However, if it's within that timeframe and the need is, is urgent because of the timing within the budget, we have no choice but to come to council for a resolution to, for that, because we're within that 180 days.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to make a motion to move forward this.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Orzado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, finally, one more.
Item number 12, the warrants. The city council will consider approving the warrant register for April 9th, 2024. The grand total is $1,468,169.31. Cancellations are 98273, 101064, 104950, and 105296. Thank you.
Mr. Auditor, take it away. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and open up to any member here in the audience who has questions regarding our warrant register, and for the people who are here for your benefit, the warrant register is just an overview of what our expenses are for the review period that we're currently discussing. And if you have any questions regarding the items that we've listed, seeing none, go ahead and close it out, bring it back to council. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Orzado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and we will be adjourned in tonight's meeting in memory of a longtime resident, an advocate for children, Ms. Mary Johnson. And again, she will be missed, but again, not forgotten. And again, that document, we'll make sure that the chief gives it to the family at the appropriate time. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Break your time. Yeah. We needed to get...